It's just past 6:30, and welcome all of you to the Planning Commission. This is our regular meeting date of Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, and we welcome all of you. Our first order of business will be to approve the minutes from September 25th, 2018. You have any comments or corrections? Make a motion please. Mrs. Lassiter?
Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
To September 25th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good, we have a second. And all of those in favor?
Aye.
All those, anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our first item of business is to consider and have a public hearing on case number SDP 18-001, Prospect Village Sub Number 02, the Waffle House Specific Development Plan. We will hear from the planning staff first, and then from the applicant and all of those of you who wish to speak will get a chance to do after we have heard from the applicant and the county.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to disclose that I have previously worked with Representative of the applicant, Michael Sheldon. I consulted with county attorney, and because I have no financial interest or otherwise in this case, I feel I can hear it clearly.
Very good. Does anybody have any problems with that? Very good.
Any objections to that, madam?
I would like to know that the form is here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And also Commissioner Chafin contacted me prior to the hearing. She feels that she cannot make an impartial decision on this case, and has elected to recuse herself.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, can we please hear from Kat Hammer from the county?
Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to disclose to the public and the Commissioners that this meeting is being video recorded as well as audio recorded. As far as this case goes, the Board does have jurisdiction to make decisions. There was a notice posted in the September 27th, the Villager posting, as well as the property was posted with a sign at least 15 days prior to the public hearing, and notice went out to adjacent property owners as well as adjacent HOAs. The case in for you tonight is SDP 18-001, Prospect Village subdivision 2. The site is located west of the intersection of East Iowa's Avenue and South Dayton Way. The site is within the Lugano at Cherry Creek subdivision, and part of the Prospect Village subdivision filing number 2. The site is adjacent to a number of zoning districts, including mixed-use, B3, R2 PUD, R5, and R3. The proposal for you tonight is being brought by the applicant's representative, Mike, from Altitude Land Company, and the owner Prospect Village Limited Partnership. They propose to develop an existing vacant pad ready site located within the Lugano at Cherry Creek subdivision. The specific development plan application proposes a change in the building architecture and building footprint as shown on the approved final development plan approved in March of 2009. The application proposes a 24-hour restaurant on a pad site with no outdoor patio use or drive-through facilities proposed. A little background on the site. The BOCC approved the Prospect Village preliminary development plan on January 8th, 2008. The BOCC approved the Prospect Village final development plan on March 3rd, 2009. Arapahoe County updated their new, or adopted, pardon me, their new PUD process effective April 1st, 2007. Under this new PUD regulations, the PDP will act as the general development plan, and the case will be processed in accordance with Section 13-104, 105-04, three-step process. If the Planning Commission chooses to approve the specific development plan, the applicant will be required to submit an administrative site plan prior to final approval of the site. The administrative site plan will document final landscaping, sign details, lighting, materials to be used on the exterior of the building, pedestrian connections, and the engineering work necessary to complete the site. The reason this application is before you tonight is because the applicant is proposing to request variations from the approved architecture on the SDP. The PDP indicates a number of specific design standards, and staff feels the proposed architecture is generally compatible with the design requirements in the PDP. The PDP also requires compatibility among groups of structures. The proposed structure includes a variety of building materials, including brick, stone veneer, steel metal awnings, maroon wood shutters, and a cornice. The architecture and building materials are similar and compatible to the existing residential and mixed-use structures. This proposal includes a smaller footprint than what was approved on the PDP. The applicant is proposing a building footprint covering approximately 5% of the pad site, and the PDP and SDP approved approximately a building pad covering 10% of the pad site. The approved PDP allows for restaurant uses. The PDP specifically prohibits 24-hour convenience retail stores. However, the PDP is silent on 24-hour restaurant uses. The approved FDP document does not list any prohibited uses. During the March 3rd, 2009, BOCC public hearing on the final development plan, both the applicant and the public discussed 24-hour operations, but it was not included on the PDP. While the PDP does not restrict 24-hour restaurant uses, approval of the FDP is contingent upon the fact that the applicant's performance of all commitments and promises made by the applicant or its representative and stated to the Board on the record. If this SDP is approved, it will clarify that 24-hour restaurants without drive-through facilities and outdoor patio uses are allowed on this pad site. Staffs have received a number of emails from concerned citizens that were not included in the packet because they were received at a later date. I have provided those to the Commissioners, and they will be provided in the record. I want to address that the applicant did submit revised architectural plans in response to citizens' comments in an effort to better comply with the requirements of the PDP and improve compatibility with the overall project. The developer of the Prosper Village Development did attend the October 11, Four Square Mile neighborhood meeting to discuss some of the concerns with the applicants as well as the residents, as well as the people included in the neighborhood meeting. Considering the findings and information provided within the staff report, staff recommends approval of case number SDP 18-001, Prospect Village subdivision number 2, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the signature of the final copy of the plans, the applicant must admit, adjust public works, staff comments, and concerns. At the time of the ASP, the applicant must provide at minimum 114 shrubs and 12 trees as required by section of the code, and based on the additional open space resulting in the reduced building footprint. At least 50% of the required trees must be evergreen to provide year-round screening. At the time of ASP, the applicant must provide window treatment to tint the windows facing or visible from adjacent residential single-family homes to mitigate interior lighting impacts from the restaurant unmuted by residents. Signage must comply with the Land Development Code. Deciduous and evergreen shrubs and trees will be provided on the western property lines to provide upper story and lower story screening to adjacent residential property. All outdoor lighting must be downed and shielded from adjacent residential properties. The dumpster and grease trap will be adequately screened with trees to provide year-round screening from adjacent uses. A scrubber system slash exhaust filtration system is required to control pollution and odors from the proposed restaurant use. A pre-submital meeting is required prior to building permit submittal. The hours of construction will be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Saturday construction will be limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and no construction is permitted on Sunday. I stand for any questions that you may have, and it's my understanding that the applicant's representative is also here.
Kat, we received a lot of information very late this afternoon, and again, tonight in hard copy. Could you go over what changes were made?
Sure. So, I forwarded on to the Commissioners a number of emails that were provided from residents who were concerned about a number of things regarding a 24-hour use, some things regarding light pollution, additional screening requests, and I would say some traffic concerns would summarize a lot of the comments that are received. Staff analyzed some of those comments and took another look at the recommendations, and I did provide you with updated recommendations. The one that I just, the recommendations that I just read, for the record, were also provided, and the applicant also provided revised plans.
And what differences did those plans show to the ones we received earlier?
The revised plans didn't have any major changes that I saw. The applicant might be able to speak to that. They were addressing staff comments that were typically done in our review, nothing that's directly related to some of the comments that were included in the emails.
And did the homeowners receive those changes at the same time we did?
The homeowners did not receive those revised plans because they are not in their final state.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like some clarification on staff's position on the 24-hour use. It appears to me that it should have been incorporated into the FDP by reference based on the meeting minutes and things that we've received and that I've reviewed here, and it sounds as though that either the applicant is asking for that to be waived, or staff does not see that as binding. So, I'd like to understand how staff is looking at this since you recommended approval.
Okay. There is audio recording indicating 24-hour operation discussions between the developer and the Board and the people present at that 2009 meeting. As part of the FDP process, since 24-hour uses are not prohibited on, 24-hour restaurant uses are not prohibited on the PDP, as part of the FDP, the applicant can request that use because it is not prohibited on the underlying PDP document. Does that clarify that for you?
Not exactly.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I've been on both sides of this table, and it seems to me, for example, let's say the fire department makes requirement, request to your PDP or FDP, they're incorporated by reference whether they're stated or not, and it seems to me that there's a lot of reference here to prohibiting 24-hour use and agreement to do so that didn't get incorporated by reference. So, I just wanted to understand why, you know, the county clearly doesn't see that, or I shouldn't say clearly. It appears they don't see that as binding based on what's more.
I can speak to that a little bit. I think the staff does see it as binding, so...
Speak up, please.
I'll try my best. So, I think staff sees that as binding. If the original resolution, which approved the FDP, has language in it that basically holds the developer to all material representations made at the public hearing, whether or not it's actually written out as a condition, you're right, it probably should have been written out as a condition as to this PDP. It wasn't. Going back and listening to the public hearing from then, it was, it was, it was pretty clear that there was at least some representations made that there's no 24-hour use permitted, whether that extends to a restaurant, is limited to a convenience store, was limited to fast food restaurants. There's probably room for argument one way or another, but based on the representation of no 24-hour uses, staff felt the best prospect was to take this forward, say, "We need approval, specific approval for the 24-hour use."
Thank you. Any other questions for me? Okay, I invite the applicant to come up.
Thank you. Mr. Sheldon is here to represent the applicant.
Good evening, madam chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michael Sheldon. My address is 8400 East Crescent Parkway, Suite 682, Greenwood Village, 80111. I am here representing Waffle House, which is a bit unusual. It's not a regular client of mine, but I was the one who made the representations and negotiated with the neighborhood groups, continued to negotiate with the neighborhood groups, have appeared last week and the week before to the Four Square Mile Development Committee before the overall Four Square Mile group. So, I'm here to discuss this issue with you. And... Does this stay up like this, Kat? Or...okay, is that better? Okay, okay, thank you. So, I am here to address the Planning Commission and these issues because I was involved with it. And the statements I'm making now are on the record. We understand they're on the record, and I'm making representations to the county as I've done for 30 or 40 years on various different projects in front of the county. I'm here with the new clients, the Waffle House company, and we have two folks that are here from their home office. Russ Holland, just wave your hand if you could, is the Vice President of Real Estate, National Real Estate, and Jeff Wright is the local party that has been processing this with a local consultant in Denver called Altitude Consultants Downtown. And this is, this is an interesting company, and it's been almost 10 years now since the PDP and FDP for Prospect Village. I'm frankly surprised that the pad sites haven't been sold or developed yet, but we are here now because they have an active contract. I think everybody understands that and how all this works. And so, I did some due diligence myself when they called and asked about the history of the negotiations and the letters that I wrote, and what was intended, and what was it contingent upon, and did I follow through after the hearing as I said I would do to reach out to the neighborhood groups and continue the discussions and try to work out other issues. They wanted to discuss that with me. And so, I said I will be pleased to get involved. I came down and met with the county staff at first, and then I visited with the Waffle House folks on the telephone. I asked them this question. Is there, this is an issue in the neighborhood now about the 24-hour use. I have a very specific recollection about what was represented and why, and the history of all of it, and what it was contingent upon, but I want to know from you whether or not it's possible for you to operate this small family restaurant in this neighborhood with other than a 24-hour use. And they responded to me that this is a company that's been in business for more than 60 years. They have 1,500 restaurants, all very similar, if not identical. We made some changes to make it look a little bit nicer here in Colorado, I will tell you, but all 1,500 restaurants are all open for 24 hours a day with one exception. And in their hometown of Atlanta where their offices are, there is apparently a Waffle House restaurant in the baseball stadium. I think Suncrest Park is that, is that the name of the baseball stadium? And because it's such a well-known brand in that market that there was a demand for that restaurant in the baseball stadium, and the problem is the baseball stadium is closed at certain hours, so you can't get into it because it's within the baseball stadium. But the restaurants themselves, all of them are 24 hours. They've carefully researched who their clientele is, who they service, how all of that works, and they said they need to have it work that way here. So, I thought about that. I thought about this company, who they are, what they do. I learned some very recent things. These two gentlemen here from Georgia today have just come here having spent five days in Panama City, Florida, looking after the victims of the hurricane in the, in the whole Florida Panhandle coast, because they have a policy in that company that they will stay open to feed and take care of first responders in every disaster area that can happen. So, they left their business place in Georgia and spent these days in Panama City, living in a trailer, taking care of this. There's one interesting anecdote that I read. I just heard about it on TV a couple of days ago. Because the folks in Florida there know that the Waffle House restaurants are open 24 hours a day, some few people during a disaster declaration who are trying to stay in their properties despite mandatory evacuation orders are generally aware that Waffle Home, Waffle House restaurants are going to be open to feed the first responders, so some of them simply won't leave knowing that if they run out of food, they can go to the Waffle House nearby, such that just a couple of days ago, Governor Rick Scott of Florida announced that Waffle House will be closed. So, you don't have an excuse to stay. You need to get out and save your life, and that just happened a couple of days ago. So, this company is a civic-minded company, community-active company, and when they say that they are not a hangout, they properly serve the overall community, and they have it down after 60 years, I believe them. So, put that aside. That has not much to do with this application. With this application, with this application... Okay. No, it's who they are. It's who they are and what their credibility is. But it's not on the four corners of the issues in this application. So, the issue, the issue, first of all, we have the staff report, and we've made a lot of changes. So, the first thing we did is the neighbors said to us, the great big yellow band that is typical part of their branding and marketing, we would prefer that you remove it and replace it with stone or brick, and so we did that. And then we dressed it up by adding a cornice, and it was one of the design elements that the planning staff thought was appropriate given the design requirements. elements that the planning staff thought was appropriate, given the design requirements of what were typical restaurant pads. Everybody needs to know that the pads on the FDP and the PDP were not site plans. They were not, they didn't have actual architecture and engineering like the big building, the Lugano Building did. They were typical to try to express the quality and how it would be compatible with the larger buildings there. They were typical buildings. The typical building was shown as a much larger building than the one that we actually have. The one we actually have is the standard building, and, and it's smaller, which means there's more open space, which means there's more landscaping. And just recently, the, the staff has said, please add, you know, more trees and buffer out. We're agreeing with all of the staff recommendations, all of the conditions. Some of the conditions came from the discussions we had with the neighborhood group leaders, both in the Development Committee and the overall Four Square Mile Neighborhood Group. For instance, they asked us for the downcast lighting that doesn't spill over, it's not much more the incremental cost. So that's why the condition has been added just recently because we offered it. They asked minor little things, would you move the dumpster and the grease trap from the west side of the building to the east side of the building? So that's one of the changes. And we, and, and we, and we did that. And, and they asked for this rubber exhaust stuff, and, and, and we said, that makes sense, and we did that. So these new conditions that you're seeing are partly borne by the discussions that we were able to do. They also asked to make the building twice as big, which was the size of the pad typical building on the FDP, and we said, we can't do that, we can't make it twice as big. And first of all, I don't think it's a good idea anyway, but, but, but I did, I did raise it with, with, with the client, and, and they said, we know this works, we've got all the market demographics, it works just fine. So we didn't do that. Then the neighbors also asked, can you have a, a cupola fixture on top of it, which was shown in the typical, and we said, instead, we'll do this entryway feature that the staff says satisfies that criteria. So the staff recommendation, we are in support of, a support of, but here's what I came to discuss with the planning commission, the history of the 24-hour discussions, as I recall them, even though it's nine years ago or 10 years ago now, I recall them vividly. And we had long discussions with Huntington Next Door, with Four Square Mile, and, and, and we had long discussions and negotiations early on, when we said we're going to have retail within the building on the first floor, as well as two pads out front on high lift, one of the first things they said, will you commit to no 24-hour convenience store? We do not want a 7-Eleven or Circle K or any of these convenience stores that can turn into a hangout or a problem in this area. Which is why the PDP specifically says and eliminates a 24-hour convenience store, that's what they asked for. And, and so as we went to the FDP process, there was a second round of negotiations, a whole bunch of different conditions, hours of operation. By the way, the new requirement for hours of operation, we also, was a request made by the Four Square Mile Development Committee, which we agreed to, which is why that is a new condition, the hours of operation, because they asked us to do this and we agreed to do this. So when we get to the second round, and I see Bruce here, I haven't seen in years, how, good evening, sir. He was active, very active in that discussion as well. What we were trying to get to was not support, but non-opposition of the project in exchange for a bunch of things, 26 different items, and, and we went through all of those, and, but the reality is the letter that has been attached as part of your packet, if you read it, it says, we've agreed these first 15 things, but the next six or seven things, which included this 24-hour operation issue, was contingent upon the non-opposition. And we can argue and talk about whether that ever happened or not. We can talk about that, and, but the reality is, we obviously in the record know that that was not completely resolved because the commissioners, the county commissioners, not the planning commissioners, we did receive a recommendation approval from the planning commission, but the county commissioners asked for a commitment that we would continue the discussions even after the FDP approval, which we attempted to do with some of the people that are in this room nine years later, 10 years later now. So obviously, the issue of support or non-opposition was not firmly embedded. It, it is our position that, and I don't want to get into the legal discussion, I was trying to have a little discussion with the county attorney about this, about, you know, what is, you know, what is legally correct if it's not in the FDP, is the FDP, the law of the land, can, can a buyer rely on the FDP when doing its due diligence and spending all the money to process and make the changes and so forth? It's, that is not what we are here to do, to talk about the legal argument. What we're here to do is to say whether this is a reasonable use in the neighborhood, because it's not a hangout. It's not a convenience store. It's a family restaurant that works very well by a company who is community-minded, civically involved, and has a national or international reputation for that. We think this is a compatible use, we agree with the staff's recommendation, and we request your approval of the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Sheldon? I guess I wanted to ask if there is representative from the Arapahoe Sheriff's Department here, if you would come and speak before we open the public hearing?
This is, I'm Deputy Jason Presley, Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office, working the crime prevention unit. Is there any specific questions?
We, we know that you, we have a copy of the letter from the sheriff's department saying because of the proposed 24-hour use, that you would have to provide increased service to the area, and wondered if you've had experience with other 24-hour restaurants and whether that would be applicable to the concerns of the neighborhood for this one?
I, with the future part of this, if it's, you know, the approval or non-approval of this, we don't specifically have solid data on any 24-hour particular restaurant, especially in the Four Square Mile area. As far as Waffle Houses go, we do know City of Parker, City of Aurora, and City of Littleton do have Waffle Houses that run 24 hours, and I do have specific data on calls for service for those locations from January 1st of this year. As far as the future goes with our resources with the 24 hours, I can't specifically say, I can't predict at this point without some type of numbers or data to determine that future, you know, calls for service or call, or resources on us. As far as the other jurisdictions, I do have numbers, but I, as the sheriff's office, we can't, we honestly can't predict that at this point.
I mean, do they, those numbers seem high?
If you would like, if you would like, the word of the term, I do have them. We'll start with City of Parker. Parker had a total of 17 calls for service between January 1st 2018 and September 30th 2018. Out of those, let me get my paperwork straight here. I'm sorry, 19 total calls, which range from citizen contact, assist a fire, unwanted party, found property, assist medical, animal cruelty, animal cruelty, which that was a gone on arrival, pretty much on that call, it was possibly a dog in a car, disorderly conduct, suspicious vehicle welfare checks, assist medical again, citizen contacts. Out of those 19 calls for service, there was one report taken, so in other words, there was one crime. And that was a disorderly conduct, which that usually means some type of physical disturbance. That was City of Parker. City of Aurora had a total of 12 calls since January 1st. Let me see, other, which that's how we're coding it, I'm not sure what other is, with two assaults, one building check, one disturbance, one domestic violence, one fireworks call, somebody actually set off fireworks in the parking lot, three medical welfare checks, so assist rescue on that, one code violation, which I'm not sure of, and one traffic stop, for a grand total of 12. And Littleton had a total of 17 calls for service, one injury accident, so somebody might have got hit in the parking lot, one assault, one civil standby, which is probably child custody exchange, two detox homes, one increased patrol, two more disturbance, one handled by dispatch, two juvenile violations, two suspicious activities, one other traffic stop, and two welfare checks. That is just from our crime analyst, she gets all this information pretty much off of Accurate Crime Analysis System that's used by the metro area. I do not have specific times as far as a 24-hour period on the clock when these occurred, but that is the total number of calls. I've talked with my people today, especially Chief Glenn Thompson, and unfortunately, we, as a sheriff's office, we can't predict what will happen or what will not happen if this goes down. It's something that, you know, stuff, we try to be proactive, but in this situation, if something goes up, we have to be reactive.
Well, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Like a convenience store, like a, like a 7-Eleven?
I can't give solid on that. It depends on location. Honestly, I don't have the numbers, and I don't want to speak out of place without having some type of data in front of me. But in crime prevention-wise, it's typically no more nor less than any 7-Eleven, tonico station, anything else. It's just, I, it, it's hard to predict crime, but on these, it depends on the type of call. I mean, it could be a simple shoplifting to a robbery, which we don't know. And I don't really want to give any information out without some type of data to determine that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will now move on. We do have a lot of people who have signed up and expressed their opinion on the sign-in sheet, but I also would like to remind all of you that there'll be a three-minute limit for anybody who wishes to speak, and remind you that we are also being recorded and live-streamed, so you are being viewed perhaps by somebody somewhere.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to also note, I asked Cap to just pass, we didn't bring a PowerPoint, but if you wanted to see the renderings of the newest building, I just passed those out to all of you. Just wanted...
Hi, I'm Jan Ruckey's Planning Division Manager with the county. Just wanted to note that we actually are going to start off with a slide presentation. We have a couple of people who are representatives of the neighborhood and have asked for some additional time. So we're going to start off with the first speaker doing a slide presentation, and then another individual towards the end of the public comment, I believe, would like to do some wrap-up. And so those, we did talk with the chair about these prior to the meeting and did arrange for some additional time beyond the three minutes. But also, just for the audience in general, if you could be sure to come to the microphone, give your name and address, that sort of thing, speak in the microphone, not have conversations in the audience, because our recording system in this room picks up sound from all over the room, not just from a microphone, and our audio recording is our official record of the meeting. So if people need to have conversations, if they could, or take a cell phone call or something, if they could just go out in the hall, that would be helpful. And if they have something they want to say, they should wait until they come up to, to make a public comment. Or if someone has signed in to speak but they don't, or they signed in but they don't necessarily want to speak, they can also just stand up at their seat when you call, when the chair calls their name and just say opposed or in favor, "I don't wish to speak," you know, and they don't really have to come up here and go through all the process of name and address and all for that. Thank you.
Okay, I think our first presenter with the slide presentation is Mary Hillsman. Mrs. Hillsman?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Mary Hillsman. I live at 2212 South Dallas Street in the Huntington-Welch neighborhood, and I am also president of the HOA Board. I am here tonight instead of our other board member and attorney who had to travel out of the country. So I wanted you all to have copies of this because he is much more verbose than I am. And I'd like to follow up on Mr. Sheldon's story. There is an emergency management system that actually has a rating scale of whether or not Waffle House has their lights on, how many items are on the menu, to help the neighborhood know about what the disaster level is in their neighborhood. So I thought that was an interesting story to share. I'd like to begin by, and I did not live in the neighborhood at this time, but I have certainly heard the stories, but my understanding is throughout that Lugano development process, the developer, the owner, the HOA, the Four Square Mile community worked together to address a lot of issues that the neighborhood had. And what I understand is it was all in contentious, but that with the help of the county and through communication between all of those parties, the final product, the Lugano development, came through and, you know, there's now a great coffee shop there, it's walkable, which is a nice addition to our community. FDP results are really the areas of contention that we have with this proposal. And what we hope to achieve tonight is that we can find some alignment with the agreements that were made in 2009, especially around the 24-hour operation and building design, and if needed, that there be continual cooperation and communication with the developer so that we can further address some of these issues. There are, again, three primary objections, 24 operations, the design as presented, and I don't know if the design I have in this is the old, current, new one or the old one, and then developer content, contact and cooperation. We have not, as an HOA, been included in this communicate, in this conversation until August of this year. So this, the original application came in, I think in, no, it was May this year, it came in last year, and then it was finally this year when we were contacted. We're asking for you to consider adherence to the FDP, which disallows 24-hour operations as far as our understanding, the observance of the FDP around design and architecture guidance, and possible continuance to a future hearing. Specific to the 24 oper, 24-hour operations, the HOA continues to express concern over having a general, a 24-hour operation in our community. Through this, through Mr. Sheldon, my understanding is, and in two pages back, there are comments that talk specifically about the 24-hour operation prohibition. Mr. Sheldon said, "We would do these things in exchange for our non-opposition." We never were able to get to the point of non-opposition, but the point is, if we were willing to do that, we are still willing to do that. A little later, Commissioner Weddick responded by saying that we just heard Mr. Sheldon talk about the list, and that we're aware many of those items apparently aren't part of the final development plan. and that we're aware many of those items apparent, apparently aren't part of the final development plan documented. And that would be one of the items that would be considered to fall under that number. And Mr. Sheldon again said that they committed to it, no twenty-four-hour operations are permitted, and they would agree to that. And, um, that is our major issue, especially for our neighbors who would be, um, whose backyards look out on the property. Um, having the traffic, not only people and car traffic and noise and lights, um, that is, uh, uh, something we are greatly opposed to. Um, again, just some more background, the developer originally offered to enter into a civil agreement prohibiting twenty-four-hour operations. Um, the del, the developer, as far as I'm aware, or our attorney is aware, never attempted to enter into an agreement um, with the HOA, um, the condition of approval was never satisfied. And our sta, our standing is approval of the FDP is still contingent on the developer entering into this civil agreement. Um, Mr. Sheldon did attend to the meeting and, um, I was out of town, so I'm relying on, um, our colleague's notes. Um, and it was stated that, um, the FDB, FDP incorporates a general prohibition on twenty-four operations and not just convenience stores. So we think, we feel like, um, asking for a twenty-four-hour operation um, requires a major amendment and would require the full BOCC approval. Um, finally, you know, concerning twenty-four hours, please don't amend the FDP. We really, um, we would love to have a restaurant in our neighborhood, but not a twenty-four operate, a twenty-four-hour operating, um, a condition of approval restricting operations. And I'm not part of this, um, conversation, so I, I don't really understand, but I, I think our, uh, four-square-mile friends will address this. And alternatively, if, if that, if a resolution, if we can't come to a resolution this evening, that the Planning Commission, um, agreed to continue this hearing so we can, um, have more conversations about coming to some agreements, specifically about the twenty-four hour operation. Our second, um, area of contention is, well, hopefully the picture on your copy shows up because it's not showing up here. The picture of the designer archi, architecture that was approved specifically has, um, pitched roofs, uh, turrets, um, and to compare that to, uh, the folks behind me can't see the comparison, but it's quite a stark difference to what was agreed to into the, in the FDP around architectural and design standards for this property. According to the architectural, um, staff, uh, they stated specifically the pitched roofs and tower elements are an integral part of the PUD's community identifiers. Um, Mr. Sheldon had claimed that the FDP elevations are typical and that the roof, pitched roof and towers are not required. Um, pitched roofs and towers were prominent part of the discussion and conditions of the approval in the three-three-two-thousand-and-nine, um, Board of Co, County Commissioners' hearing. Um, the next couple pages are very specific comments, um, from those minutes from Diana Rayal from Norris Design. Uh, she said specifically, "The retail pad architecture has been changed, and now the pads have pitched roofs and tower elements." Um, she said that the applicant feels that the community identifier is specifically tied to those architectural towers. Um, and we, as a neighborhood, would like the, um, the new development in that community to reflect the same, um, design elements that were approved in the FDP. You might have two pages of the same thing, I just got this last night, so I apologize for all of the, um, misspellings are in here. Okay, the BLCC finding of fact number six from that hearing on three-three-two, oh, two thousand and nine was specific use of architectural towers to provide a community identifier as required by the PDP and recommended by the four-square-mile sub-area plan as presented in the PDP. So what are we asking for, specific to the design and architecture? Is that, again, please don't amend the FDP, we feel that those, um, discussions and agreements made in two thousand and nine have, um, to do with that entire development area and contribute significantly to our neighborhood. Um, we would like that the proposal incorporate pitched roofs and towers and other elements required into the PDP and FDP around specific, um, design. And then alternatively, if that decision can't be denied, that we continue this hearing so that the developer and the HOA can discuss acceptable proposal. Our, um, last point of, um, opposition is the fact that we really have not, as Mr. Sheldon said, had any developer contact. The first contact actually came to me, um, and since there was such a large group of people, um, probably arguing uh, when this organ, um, this development first accorded, it's really disappointing that we are, it feels like we're feeling, fighting out about this at the last minute. Um, here, the next page, the SCP was first submitted on August fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Um, the first time, uh, the HOA heard about it was May sixteenth of this year. And that was only because the, um, applicant, um, the request for an informal review was denied, and they had to go through the special development plan process. Since then, um, our HOA, our attorney, James Parrott, and four-square-mile contacted Waffle House and Altitude Consultants multiple ti, multiple times between June and August with no response. September twenty-eighth was the first time the developer contacted four-square-mile, and, um, they only did that through their counsel. The fact that the developer has never contacted our HOA directly, um, is a reason for concern for us as neighbors. Uh, in summary, um, I, I gotta tell you, I was pretty shocked when Mr. Sheldon said he had been reaching out to us because I'm the president and I would have known that. Um, and that all of our efforts to contact, um, Waffle House, or the owner, or the developer, um, had been ignored. And we really need to have this, um, some communication if indeed, um, we're gonna come to some agreements. Um, like I said, when I began this presentation, uh, it would be nice to have a walkable restaurant in our community, um, but the issues around, um, what was agreed to in two thousand and nine, specific to the FDP, uh, the twenty-four operations, the design elements, um, we see those as necessary additions to their proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now, um, open the hearing for the public, and you each will be limited to three minutes. And if you want somebody to represent your point of view, so one person can represent several of you, that is very acceptable. And remind you that you are being recorded. And if you have any questions and comments, make sure you direct it toward the Planning Commission and not to the back of the room. And I am going to read the names as people signed in, and you can come and speak if you wish, and if you don't wish, that's okay too. The first name I have here is Daher Eagle.
Yeah, that's me, yeah.
Right. Just state your name and address, please, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Oh, thank you very much, my name is Daher Eagle, I live in, uh, Huntington Estates, my address is twenty-two seven S U South Dayton Street. I'm here tonight to oppose the proposed development for the obvious reasons. Everything the HOA said, I agree with that. My house immediately, my backyard is literally facing the restaurant. If you were in my shoes, you would be feeling the same way I feel today. Though, you know, I like restaurants, I like to go out. But this restaurant, especially the twenty-four hours, it does not make any sense at all to me. And the attorney mentioned, you know, uh, uh, Circle K, seven-eleven as hangouts that, so the restaurant's not gonna be like that, guess what, the Waffle House is the majority of all hangouts. We're gonna have twenty-four-hour people, noise, trash, odor, you know, I can hear now people, the, the parking lot that they're gonna use, I can actually hear at night, because my, my bedroom, bedroom's actually at the ba, the lower level. So I can actually hear the conversation of the people at the parking lot. Can you imagine what a restaurant is gonna look like? So, you know, I am totally opposed to the idea of a twenty-four-hour, uh, restaurant operation, that doesn't make any sense at all. And I'm going to be, and all of us, all of my neighbors will be negatively impacted by this proposed restaurant. So please, uh, make, it doesn't, you know, you don't have to be genius to understand, there's nothing wrong with this picture. This doesn't make any sense at all. All you have to do is go out there and take a look at the location. If they wanna limit this operation to a daytime, you know, that could be working out, as, as the, as the HOA said, but if this doesn't really make any sense to me, and I'm totally against it, please consider our plea and make the sound, make a sound decision, thank you very much.
Thank you. Second sign-in is Dan Wander.
Hi, um, my name is Dan Wander, and I'm at twenty-one ninety-four South Dayton Street, which is also, um, adjacent to the lot and the, uh, proposal. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that you're never going to see in a real estate ad backs to a twenty-four-hour establishment. That you will never see that in a real estate ad, and it's for good reason. There is a time when you go out, you have restaurants you eat, and you go to work, then you just wanna go home and be in peace. You wanna sit in the backyard, you don't wanna smell grease trap, you don't wanna have trash in your trees, you don't wanna have people doing donuts in the parking lot across from you. There are things about a neighborhood and a residence that are special, that you just come home and you just wanna decompress, and it has nothing to do with, you know, Waffle House. I have no opposition to the Waffle House as a company, but they cannot control who visits their establishment, or when they visit it, or what they're gonna do when they're there. And to say that you will never have somebody doing donuts in the parking lot, or having a domestic dispute, or God forbid, you know, pulling a gun on somebody, it's a fallacy. And yet, this is what they're asking to bring into our neighborhood, a place where we should have peace and quiet, and to escape the corporate world, to escape everything like that. Um, you know, I was here when Lugano came in, and before that, I bought the property, I had a nice open lot with a view. Now I've got a wall and some trees that we put up, um, so my world shrank. And in now, my world's gonna shrink again, because if I'm sitting out on my back porch and I can smell the grease from, you know, twenty-four-hour operations, or, you know, God forbid, something happens in that twenty-four-hour period. Maybe it only happens once a month, maybe we lock out, but that's once a month, every month, for as long as I live there. And so I asked the board to consider rejecting this application on the balance that it actually causes harm to the residents, and it will not cause harm to the Waffle House, nor its representatives. They're a tenacious lot, they have lots of money, they will find another place, and life will go on. But for us in the neighborhood, that's not gonna happen, so respectfully submit that, uh, the opinion that you should deny this application. Thank you.
The next sign-in is Mae McEnteece. Mary.
Mary, Mary McEnteece, thank you. Good evening, Madam Commissioner and other members of the board. Uh, I have lived in the Huntington Estates, nine-three-zero-nine East Evans Place, um, of course Denver. Uh, I'm a pediatrician that has practice in the community for over twenty years. I chose Huntington Estates for the very reason it was a quiet neighborhood, uh, very central to a number of the hospitals and very easy to get in and out of. Ten years ago, when the development company, uh, made Prospect Village, um, we were all concerned as members of the HOA that there would be an increased amount of, um, criminal activity. Um, and it was. Uh, Rappo Penney Sheriff, thank you very much, have been right in policing, and, uh, the, a number of the crimes and, uh, amount of times they've been called have decreased over the years as people have realized that despite being easy access, that the people, the HOA are all involved in keeping our neighborhood safe. There have been multiple studies that have shown that twenty-four-hour convenience stores, restaurants, all have increased amount of criminal activity within a set distance. There are a number of marijuana stores along the Aurora, uh, area, as well as further down on Evans Place. Um, I don't know if a lot of you remember, um, being in our youth, and where did we all end up at three in the morning? Was either at the Waffle House or the local place that kept open all night long, and let me tell you, it will continue to be that draw. The amount of activity will continue throughout the night. I definitely oppose the procedure, and mainly, not only in the grounds of the increased amount of criminal activity that has been seen within this, but it also poses a danger for our community. The amount of traffic right now, it's already a pain in the ass, well, excuse me, a pain to get out of the development at any given time, rush hour is just a mess. Uh, but it does, uh, increase the amount of traffic throughout the area, and our neighborhood will be used as a convenient cut-through. Uh, because it is, if you do know, and we all know that, when the, uh, services are held at the Islamic Center, that people do these head as a cut-through. Again, I oppose it for those reasons, but I also oppose it because ten years ago, I was involved in the initial studies, and there was agreement that there would be no twenty-four-hour commercial business, it wasn't a convenience store, but may I say, Waffle Houses are convenient, so do they fit the convenience store? Yeah, they're convenient, so why not? Uh, that makes it a convenience store, so, again, whether they're twenty-four-hour businesses, the agreement was that they should not be there. Again, the other very particular we were with is to fit into the neighborhood design, and that again is not being held up. Um, and we are very in agree, in agreement with the neighborhood, as well as four-square-mile, that the agreements that were made ten years ago should be kept up. Um, may I address to the Waffle, uh, community, uh, the Waffle House representatives? Um, my family has been, been involved in the number of the rescue missions and going down and helping people in areas that have had disasters, and they have been a member of the community. I do respect that they, I have every right to be present in our area, and if there's a disaster, we know where to go, but however, I feel that having them twenty-four hours a day is against what we had all agreed on ten years ago. Thank you very much, and again, I do oppose the motion.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Piso.
Oh, I see, I oppose, and I would like to give my three minutes to someone else.
Thank you. Wendy Corey.
I am opposed as well, and will give my three minutes to someone else.
Thank you. Pete Nelson.
Hi, I'm Pete Nelson, I live at twenty-one oh-four South Dayton Street. My property is right up against the fence of Lugano, and I'm vehemently opposed to this. I, I don't see any good coming out of this, I mean, it, the only people that stand to benefit from this are the people that don't live here, the Waffle House Company out of Atlanta, and whoever's selling the pad to them. Um, there, there's just nothing that good that happens between midnight and five in the morning in an all-night establishment. And I don't think any of you folks live in Huntington Estates. Huntington Estates area like myself. I think if you did, you'd be vehemently opposed to it as well. It's a family neighborhood, a lot of elderly people. And, I mean, predecessors said the crime rates around those kind of places are statistically higher than anywhere else in the communities. And it just doesn't make any sense. And we were promised, whether it was specifically written into the Legano or not, that there would be no 24-hour. And we opposed the Legano thing for years and years and years, and spent lots of money trying to not have that there. But we lost out on that one, and I think we're going to fight this one fairly hard. And I would appreciate you voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Patty Nelson.
No, she's out.
Okay. Next is Mike Welch.
My name is Mike Welch. I live at 9119 East Jewel Circle. And I must say, I'm the oldest resident in Huntington Welch. I've been there 74 years. I'm never opposed to Legano. I'm opposed to the Waffle House. I'm especially opposed to the 24-hours. And nobody has mentioned particularly that people that live on Dayton Street are going to experience a huge lot in property values. And we were told that we were going to have no businesses open between, for 24-hours. So anyway, I'm opposed. And I think everybody here in the room is opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Lewis.
Hello. My name is Randy Lewis. I reside at 2214 South Dallas Court since 1999. I was also, and I am very opposed to the 24-hour operation. It's nice that Waffle House is a civic-minded corporation. They insist on 24-hours, so they need to find another location. It's as simple as that. Our neighborhood is quiet. We're civic-minded. We have a lot of philanthropic people in our neighborhood. I run a nonprofit and have a lot of people in the neighborhood who contribute to it, who provide clothing for children, and who support what we do. We have a lot of doctors in the neighborhood who go overseas to disaster areas and donate their time. We're the residents. We're the taxpayers. We're the parents and grandparents and families that live in that neighborhood. This will invade our privacy. It will invade our right to peaceful existence. We're in the neighborhood immediately next to the proposed site. The staff mentioned zoning areas around the entire Legano property, and some of those on the north and the east sides are all commercial. If the Waffle House were going to be on that side, it wouldn't be as big of an issue. It would be, there would be all those apartment buildings in between our neighborhood, our homes, and the Waffle House. As it is, you've already heard from several residents whose backyards will be right next to the Waffle House. They will be subject to the noise. They will be subject to the lights. They will be subject to the smells. And it will destroy their property values. It will destroy their peaceful existence and the right to enjoy their backyards. Even their bedrooms will be invaded from the sounds, the smells, and the traffic. Also want to just mention, we're such a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, we don't even have streetlights in our neighborhood. We've been against streetlights because we like the quiet, dark nature in our, in our small, single-home community. We are the single homes in our neighborhood. We have to, I want to mention the traffic. If you are westbound on Islet and turning into our neighborhood, there's a right turn lane into our neighborhood. Since the Legano property's been developed, we've had to share that with people turning into the apartment buildings and into the site there. You put another restaurant there or something on that pad, then we're going to be sharing our right turn lane with additional traffic. We're not looking forward to that. So I think we need to take the civic-mindedness of the residents into mind more than the restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, signed up, is Christina Tucker.
Good evening. I'm Christina Tucker. I live at 2100 South Alton Way, Denver, Colorado. And I am opposed to the 24-hour operation, not to a restaurant in general. One of the things I just want to keep going back to is my biggest concern, I work in the title industry, and my concern was with the lapse in the documentation of the agreement from 2009. And I feel that that lapse, and I'm not sure whose fault, it was sort of alluded to, that maybe because that was not recorded or put on the original map, that therefore it should be abandoned, or maybe not so much brought to mind. I just want to make sure that the neighborhood in good faith agreed to that. We believe that the development agreed to that in good faith. And just because it wasn't written on the final plaque, I'm not sure whose responsibility it was, but I don't think it was the neighborhood's. We felt it was in good faith. Again, we all agree, we love Waffle House. We have no agreement against theirs, their business. We just feel that the 24-hour operation was an agreement, and that in where it sits in our neighborhood, that we would like you to oppose this based on the 24-hour operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Margie Sobe.
Good evening. My name is Margie Sobe, and I live at 1403 South Addison Court in Aurora 80018. Although I do not live in the Huntington Estates community, my community of Murphy Creek experienced a very similar situation seven years ago. And the injustice of what was done to my community is what caused me to begin following development applications closely. And I have been appalled at how often this same situation repeats itself throughout many municipalities. In my opinion, Huntington Estates' concerns and reasons for opposing the development are sound, logical, and reasonable, based on our Apotheo County zoning codes and comprehensive plan, based on the drawings included in tonight's packet. The proposed building is not compatible with either the design requirements or the spirit of the design standards. This building will look terribly out of place, among others, with pitched roofs, gables, and dormers. Any changes that are significant enough to require major amendments will most certainly not be compatible with the surrounding area. The mixed-use development designation states, "The goal of mixed-use is to provide common design and architectural elements that allow different uses to blend together." All of the site design considerations addressed in the compact development plan, again, based on the drawings included in tonight's packet, this building will not blend with the surrounding area. One of the goals of commercial infill development states, "Limit the intensity of new commercial development to provide services needed in the area at a scale in keeping with the surrounding residential uses." I fail to see how a 24-hour restaurant is in keeping with surrounding residential uses. The four-square-mile sub-area plan under neighborhood livability states, "When adjacent to existing residential neighborhoods, new development and infill redevelopment should be compatible in scale, use, and character." I fail to see how this short, flat-roofed building will be compatible in scale, use, or character. Section 13-103 PUD approval criteria, item D, states, "In part, allow greater flexibility in project design in return for greater development quality, amenities, and protection of nearby properties from the impacts of new development." Again, I fail to see how a 24-hour restaurant will provide protection for nearby properties. In fact, the Apotheo County Sheriff's Patrol Department has commented that a 24-hour operation will most likely require an increased demand for law enforcement. After the development of a 24-hour gas station and convenience store in the beautiful golf course community of Murphy Creek, we have experienced light pollution, litter and trash, occasionally homeless people sleeping on the sidewalk, outside the store, going through the dumpster, and much, much more traffic. Additionally, the self-storage and potentially RV storage that was created across the street from the gas station is also a source of concern due to our constant fear of what may come next. Additional shrubs and trees cannot mitigate the impacts of a 24-hour facility, which may bring with it many, if not more, of the problems my community has experienced. I do not wish this on homeowners from any other communities. We all purchase our homes in good faith, based upon development plans that were in place when we bought our properties. It isn't right for a developer to come back years later and want to break the public's trust to make unwelcome and inappropriate changes. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next sign-in is Mary Loving Driscoll.
I yield out of on South Alton Court 2039, South Alton Court. And I'm of opposition to the 24-hour operation.
Dave Driscoll.
I'm also live at the same, same address, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Alan Wilson.
Evening. Thank you for your service. 9400 East Islet Avenue, number 56. I think that the compromises that were made in 2009 are consistent with the residential quality and nature of the development surrounding. I think that there were compromises, even to the revised plan, and it was discussed tonight. Those are good, good-world compromises that reflect that it's a residential neighborhood, and a 24-hour operation doesn't fit that nature. Mixed-use development is great. You've been thoughtful in your analysis about what should it be, what should it look like, how should it fit. This simply does not. 24-hour nature business will add crime, will add a number of light pollution, trash, other congestion issues to a residential neighborhood that doesn't need it. It was interesting to listen to the officer speak tonight. We can talk about statistics in terms of the increased crime rate for that type of operation. And the reality is, when you think about it, it'd be really to know what his call rate is right now for businesses that complement residential use. 24-hour operations do not. So I'll stand in opposition to this, but I do want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Kevin Gross.
I yield my time to Mark Lambert.
Very good. Bruce Peterson.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Peterson. I live at 2161 South Alton Way in Denver, Colorado. As you can see in the letter dated December 8th, 2008, from Attorney Michael Sheldon, I was copied on that memo to the Huntington Estates Association as I was the authorized representative to represent them during these multiple-year negotiations. I'm here this evening to testify before you as to my understanding about the 24-hour prohibition referenced in item number nine in Michael Sheldon's letter, which states that it shall not be permitted. I do agree with the county's assessment that the 24-hours should be upheld. I do agree with our president's, everything that she put on the board. And I agree with Mr. Sheldon to where he said in this courtroom, courtroom, or this room this evening, that we continue the negotiations after the FDP was completed. The clause was included in this, in his letter, because we requested it, because we unequivocally opposed any business or organization that would exceed normal business hours. Never do I recall that there was any agreement about a specific type of business. The applicant states that the county did not include this as part of the FDP because we did not accept this letter is not true. Mr. Sheldon and I had an agreement, or at least I thought we did, and that continued multiple months after the FDP was approved. Although I am confident that our objection, based upon the facts, will be accepted by the board, I think there's another consideration which should be considered. It is a moral code that I think has applicability today, but somehow seems to be ignored by so many others in our contentious society. Mr. Sheldon did comment that this was not just a legal matter. It was other things. In 2011, I came across two books, which I think represents my personal philosophy. Just as you gentlemen are who you are, this is who I am. The two books are written by Jim Olander, Cowboy Values and Cowboy Ethics. I was so impressed with them that it helped me to change the way I conducted business, that I have the author write to our grandchildren, that will be given to them when they reach the age of graduation. This was done in 2011, when they were three years old. So I adhere to what I felt was a good way to lead your life that extends beyond what a contract might be. In summary, the author, a former Wall Street broker, historically reminds us about Western values and ethics. His mission, I believe, was to remind citizens today that we should be governed more by what is right, rather than what is, what other conditions might exist. Let me just give you a short quote to help put this into perspective. Out of the book, "As a matter of survival, they, the cowboy, needed to know they could depend upon the integrity and character of those who rode with them." The author described the cowboy code as ten timeless principles to live by. One of them, which I think is applicable this evening, may help you to feel comfortable rejecting this opposition, which I encourage you to do. When you make a promise, keep it. I don't care that this item may have been omitted from the FDP for whatever the reason is. We were promised that no 24-hour business would be allowed. That's indicated in the letter, which was acknowledged by Mr. Sheldon. It's my understanding that this was where the applicant didn't approach the HOA, despite the fact that the Commissioners or the Representatives of various departments suggested that they do meet with the four-square-mile organization. This has always been the case, 100% of the time. And so why is it that not until past August, several months after they submitted the application, did they approach us? They know why they approached us. I don't know why they didn't approach us, because of the 24-hour prohibition. If you were a neighbor, would there be any question in your mind what Mr. Sheldon promised in his letter? The applicant states that we did not agree to these terms, yet in fact, we did agree. It is my understanding, as I said to you, that the company did not approach us, and I have to ask you why. Is this the type of neighbor that you feel that you want to represent, be part of your neighborhood? I don't think so. If you do have questions, I would welcome them. And let me thank you for the many volunteer hours that each of you gives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen Kennedy. Karen Kennedy still here? Okay. Shirley Warford. Okay, 8 o'clock, we'll, we'll take a break because we have a lot of more names to go through. Okay, Katla Seal? No? Emily?
I'm Emily Overhill. I oppose at 92067.
Okay. Whitney Pop?
2266 South Dayton, directly backing up the Waffle House, and I'm going to yield City Home, my correct neighbor, and I oppose.
Thank you. Victoria Levin? Levin?
Vernon.
All right.
I am openly opposed. I will yield my time to Cindy, but I'd like to ask one question.
Could you please come forward and speak into the microphone, and repeat your name and address, just for the record?
My name is Victoria Vernon. I live at 2170 South Dallas Street, Denver 80231. I just want to ask one question of the audience. Can we ever show our hands of who's opposed to this? Can I give you a visual? I think it's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony DeSantis?
My name is Anthony DeSantis. I'm at 9311 East Jewel Circle. I am opposed to this. What I've noticed in living in the community for less than six months is that this is a very tight-knit community. It is a very family-oriented community. And what's interesting in following all this is, it seems as if it's incumbent upon the homeowners to prove why this shouldn't happen. I think they're asking for the variance. Shouldn't they have to prove what benefit it would be to have a variance? I don't know that I've heard anything... I don't think I've heard anything from them or in this process that shows how this would benefit the community or anybody in any way, other than the business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Gruber? Okay, well, maybe we're going to be able to move along here. Azam Makui? Russ Holland? Okay. Brian Weber?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Brian Weber. I live at 2212 South Dallas Street. Lived for about five years, so you might recognize that address. My wife is the president of the HOA, and I also oppose, which is a judicious decision on my part, but I do oppose this. And I want to tell you, there are a lot of reasons why, but I just wanted to speak a little bit about my experience. We moved into the neighborhood about five years ago. And this is a neighborhood that, as Anthony just pointed out, has a real ethic about improving itself, about a strong community ethic, about making it a better place than it already is, and it's a great place to live. So, you know, I love the Waffle House. I go to Waffle, I travel a lot. I've been to a lot of Waffle Houses. My favorite one's in Montgomery, Alabama. It's downtown. It's a great, it's just, it's an authentic, great place to go. You know that store, yeah. Awesome, he built it. So it's not about that. It's about what Anthony just said. It's about how do we move our community forward? And how does this action of having a 24-hour diner, let's call it what it is, plop down in our neighborhood? If you look at the map, you're going to see that this pad is surrounded by residential. It's not a business area, it's surrounded by residential. So it's going to affect everybody who lives there. I'm in real sympathy with my neighbor. I live 600 feet from the pad. Some of my neighbors live less than 200 feet from it. This is going to have a real impact. And so I hope that you'll take a careful look at that. That is probably not a best use for this location. In fact, we know that it isn't. It's not going to be consistent with our community's ethic about improving our place and our community. I love the comment about the no lights in our neighborhood. Yeah, that's part of it. It's kind of symbolic about who we are. So I say that. And so I would just, no, I need to move on. I would just compel the Commissioners to please work with us in our mission to try to improve our neighborhoods. The decision to put this facility within our neighborhood, right in the middle of it, is entirely inconsistent with that mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you all comfortable with forging ahead? Okay. Leslie Sumney? Sumney?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Sumney. I live at 2170 South Alton Way. I wasn't going to speak until I got here. I would like to say that although we are new to the neighborhood, my aunt and uncle built the house in the 70s, and so I've been coming to it since I was a child, never thinking that we actually would own a home in that wonderful neighborhood of Aunt Shirley and Jerry. So what I wanted to say was that I too love Waffle House. We do travel and take advantage of it. But as I was listening to Mr. Sheldon speak, I was thinking about the meeting that I was at last week where we heard that the residents of the apartments who are facing the pad site have some sort of addendum to their lease that would let them opt out of keeping their lease. We, as homeowners, have no way to opt out. We must stay there once we get our Waffle House. The other thing that I wanted to say was that, you know, we hear that we have a 24-hour Waffle House. There's only one Waffle House that is not open 24 hours because of where it's located, that, you know, the stadium is not open 24 hours, therefore the Waffle House cannot be open 24 hours. Well, I would say that if there's one, there can be two. And I think I thought, no, 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 there was one more thing I wanted to say in my brief three minutes, that I did a quick Google search, because I said, well, let me just, because maybe I'm crazy, because I might be. Maybe I'm crazy. Let me just look at this. So I Googled "Waffle House crime stats." Lots of articles, 15 weird crimes only at Waffle House, you know, several. So then I said, wait a minute, let me go ahead and Google Village Inn crime stats. Let me Google IHOP crime stats. And the number of weird crimes, violent crimes, just per Google search, couldn't be, the IHOP and Village Inn don't hold a candle to what was written about Waffle House. It's very, it's not a professional statistical thing, but it is something that I was able to look up right here. So I did oppose it. I love Waffle House, but I oppose it right there and would hope that you all would see fit to also oppose it right in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Lovely?
Yes, 9041 East Jewel Circle. I've been there for 27 years, and I oppose.
Thank you. Cindy Ahm?
Yes, my name is Cindy Ahm. I'm at 2256 South Dayton Street in Denver 80231. And I do oppose the proposed Waffle House and its current plan. I just want these guys to see the face of somebody that lives 177 feet. They were the proposed.
Right, Commissioner.
Well, I need them to see it too.
You can speak to them, but face it.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I want them to see a real person that this is going to affect. There's really not much more I can say that everybody hasn't already said tonight. I've been involved in the whole proposal for the Lugano, what is now called the Lugano property, so I do know about a lot of these things. I do know about Michael Sheldon's promises, as empty as they are right now. I do know about his promises. I was in those meetings constantly. The bottom line is, is I don't think any of us are really opposed to a restaurant in that, in that location. Not even a Waffle House. We just need something that makes sense. I've done some research, and the ones in Colorado and Arizona are not located close to residential, as close proximity as we are. Most of them are amongst fast food restaurants and other retail. But there really isn't any other ones that are as close proximity that I could find to where this would be to our home. Since this appears to be outside of Waffle House's business model for locations, as well as some of their proposed redesigns of the building, it seems to be reasonable, responsible, respectful, and possible to also curtail hours. I don't see why that is such an issue since they're coming into a nicer neighborhood. And all I'm hearing tonight is everybody is opposing, for the most part, the 24-hour issue. I don't think I've heard anybody really say, I don't want a restaurant there. I think that's the biggest condition, that we would have a non-opposition if they would be more reasonable and want to work with us. So I respectfully oppose the proposed Waffle House and its current plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Bea Covisson?
I live at 2206 South Beeler Way, and I'm in Denver, Colorado. And I oppose.
Okay, thank you. Rose Blair?
Good evening. I'm at 2219 South Alton Way. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I heard Mr. Sheldon say something earlier that I wanted to speak to. He said that he didn't want to bring up the legality of the audio recording versus the FDP, which I thought was an interesting way to bring it up anyway. I think what's important here is not legality, but intent, which is very clear in the original audio. And unfortunately, the mistake of it not being captured and documented is also clear. Whose mistake that was is neither here nor there, but that is essentially what brought us here today, that technicality in the language. So we think it is important to address that. And if we are going to talk about that, let's go back to the original intent of what was supposed to be documented. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Stith?
My address is 2202 South Dallas Street. I'm opposed, and this just does not belong in our agreement.
Thank you.
My brothers and sisters.
Jeff Wright? Barbara Halsel?
I'm Barbara Halsel, and I live at 2181 South Alton Way, and I oppose this. I have yet to know a family, this is advertised as a family establishment. I don't know of any families that go to eat at midnight or 2:00 in the morning.
Thank you.
And just for the record, if you do have additional comments beyond that you oppose it, or there's any prior comments, please do come to the microphone, because we are going to have your comments in the record because we can't carry you on this party.
Rob Kishfah?
My name is Rob Kishfah. I live at 2153 South Beeler Way, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I've lived in the neighborhood for 15 years and definitely have a history with Lugano like a lot of my fellow neighbors. I want to start out with, you know, I hope all of you have done a site visit, because looking at maps and pictures and drawings just doesn't do this justice, because this proposed project is very close to our neighborhood. I also wanted to say that our neighborhood has been misled over the years on that 24-hour operation. You've heard a lot of people speak to that. I just want to focus on two areas of concern. The first is home values. I'm a real estate broker, and when brokers and appraisers alike try to establish value, they look at, does it back a park? Does it back a highway? Does it back open space? Does it back retail? And, you know, when we're looking at, you know, what's projected here, and these people along Dayton, they're looking at a 10% hit. So, you know, and that's, you know, and when you're talking about a $400,000 house, a $500,000 house, that's real money. These people will be affected. I also want to talk about the 24 operation. You know, there's an old saying, if you build it, they will come, and they will come in droves. Nothing good happens after midnight. We've talked about that. And starting with crime, you know, the deputy, he mentioned three locations. I think I called, I heard 46 calls, and, you know, crime, noise, traffic, those are the types of potential issues that we're going to have if this building is built. Appreciate you hearing us out. I hope you do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next name I have here is Nita Reagan. I thought that you wanted to speak at the end. Is that still true? Okay, well, we're going to come back to you then. Brad R. on South Dayton Street?
I oppose.
And Coburn Rip? And A.J. Cohen?
A.J. Cohen is at 2292 South Alton Way in Denver 80231. I've been there for 22 years. I'm sure you've heard multiple reasons, legal, civic, societal, social, and the essence of how humanity chooses to coexist with its environment tonight, enough for you to understand the feelings of the community. I fully agree with most of their statements, but I'm also dumbfounded at why Lugano is so desperate to sell either homeowners in their own area, ability to say, hey, this is where I live, by taking Waffle House's lease money and putting it right on, not into the building, but outside of the building in a parking lot. What I and others here would rather gather to have discussions with all of you, our county Commissioners, on is hearing how you're all committed, your time in this position, to intelligently and with humans in mind, try to design the future in specific areas within Arapahoe County. Everyone in Colorado or the Denver area is threatened with density. We're threatened with the largest expansion of real estate in this country, which is storage areas on every corner. But personally, we'd love to hear more about where are you going to do parks? How are you going to expand the High Line Canal? What are we going to do to make the humans that live in that area less sensitive to the density and less sensitive to retail and national credit tenant operations that don't really bring value to their area? How will that be designed for the future? With all, I saw the 20-year plan for Iowa Avenue back in 2002, 2003, and Iowa hasn't quite expanded yet to accommodate all the traffic that comes from Aurora. So that's what I'd really rather gather to hear, rather than dickering over putting a Waffle House in the middle of a parking lot of a car and road apartment complex. We have a road that's in front of us at our entrance there that people cannot get up when it is snowy and icy. We have constant accidents and long lines of traffic. Not much has really been done there either. Why are we here talking about a Waffle House? It took forever to get a bridge underneath Iowa for the High Line Canal and the safe crossing of pedestrians and for bicycles. That took forever. So we're still working on many, many things that improves a lot of the humans that exist in the Arapahoe County area that now have to consider a Waffle House. So I'd rather really talk more in the future about what we're going to do to improve the lot of Arapahoe County and the residents within it and their safe passage than the necessity of having a lease for a Waffle House in the middle of a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last sign-in. Mr. Lampert, you want to go first or last, or last?
Nita's going to go before.
Okay. Nita Reagan, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Nita Reagan, and I live at 2191 South Dallas Street, Denver. I represent the Huntington Estates neighborhood as well. I'm opposed, as you have heard. I have lived there for 21 years with my husband and two sons, and as you probably got a glimpse of, our neighborhood is really a true gem. Huntington Estates was very involved in the negotiations process 10 years ago, and we believe we have finally worked through concerns and arrived at some discussions that we were comfortable with. Lugano is basically attractive, and we liked the proposed designs for the retail pad. This Waffle House definitely does not fit the design proposal that was agreed upon. It is an awkward square box plopped in an empty space. You have a copy of the letter that Mr. Sheldon told us. He knew about our concerns, and it was their proposal to have no 24-hour operations permitted. And we trusted that. We are not opposed to a restaurant or Waffle House. I love it. I walked to the little Sauner Cafe with my dad, who's 80, and we go have coffee in the stone, and then I was thinking, oh, I'd love to go walk to a Waffle House, but I don't want a Waffle House that's 24 hours. So, hey, how about a new business model? What the problem is, we are opposed to any business that would encourage upon our enjoyment of our family's lives 24 hours a day, 365 days a year for the next several decades, through the wee hours of the morning, bringing possibly intoxicated people at 2:00 a.m. and on, looking to eat to sober up. We are talking about a business only 177 feet from some of our backyards. It's simply not acceptable and very clearly not what was agreed to. Late-night car alarms, car doors opening and shutting, headlights, they're all an intrusion of our privacy. Since we were not contacted, I further wonder if even the residents of Lugano were contacted The parking issue is going to be bad, because at certain times of the day, it's already nearly full, with maybe about 12 spaces open, and that's during the day sometimes when homeowners are not even there. So those people will probably get pushed into paved parking in the garage. Along with the 24-hour operations, the biggest concern that I have, and I think all of us have, is an increase in crime. So I now hear a study that was done in July of 2017 by Tate Twinnam of the University of Washington, and it was printed in the Journal of Urban Economics. They studied whether commercial zoning increased neighborhood crime. They looked at the location of every instance of robbery, assault and battery that took place in Chicago between 2008 and 2013. And they concluded, there is a strong relationship between crime and commercial land use activities. And I quote, in addition to what I just, what "strong relationship" is in quotes, attributed to restaurants, bars and liquor stores, especially between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., when late-hour bars are open. At our meeting last week, one of the concessions that Mr. Sheldon thought he would be able to negotiate with the owners when I brought this up was to add more security on-site. But this wouldn't do one bit of good to prevent crime from seeping into our neighborhood from patrons who have ill intentions and spot a nice neighborhood ripe for the picking. We very much appreciate the concessions that were made thus far to find compatible ground. It all boils down to the 24-hour issue, 24-hour issue, which he says they will not bend on. Why not be in line with the businesses that are around us that are not 24 hours? And then there was an earlier question about the actual crime statistics, and I have, each of you have this map. It's a one-mile radius of the crime in our neighborhood between Isleof and Quebec on the left, in the peak highlight, and Parker, Havana, Isleof on the right. You can see, these are locations where there were 24-hour businesses. You can see the cluster of crime in both of those locations. You can see in the middle, where the green area is, just above it, where the red circle is, to the right of that, above the green area on the right, is where this location would be. You can see there's like hardly any crime. We have a good neighborhood watch program. But what would obviously happen is if there is then a 24-hour business plopped in the center of this, that crime is going to seep to the inside. It will attract people from both of those areas of 24-hour, midnight, middle-of-the-night, ill-meaning people into our area. I have a list of actual burglaries. May I go past the time because of others? Thank you.
Try to wrap up. We'll give you one more minute.
Yes. Burglary, forced entry, burglary, forced entry, larceny from auto, vehicle motor, vehicle theft, larceny from auto, burglary, forced entry, robbery from a business, strong arm, burglary, forced entry, vehicle motor, vehicle theft, damaged property, private property. I mean, there's three pages of it. And that was just for six months. So, in conclusion, if they are civic-minded, then they will understand that we have a concern about crime and that this is not a 24-hour, business is not appropriate where we're located. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lampert?
Good evening, Commissioners, Hunting Board members. Mark Lampert, here on behalf of Four Square Mile, 9022 East Colorado Drive. As you can tell, it's been a long time, probably since probably Lugano came, that we had such a large attendance at a meeting. And I want to tell you that we have had negotiations in the last 14 days that have actually produced the few items that you heard that Mr. Sheldon alluded to. The concessions were good, but they haven't gone far enough on this. And as you well know, some of you that are new, the Four Square Mile has the Dirty 13. When the Four Square Mile sub-area was planned, it was discussed that there would be 13 items that we, as a group, and was accepted by the Planning Board and the Commissioners, that 13 items we did not ever want to see in our area. Sexual-oriented businesses, car lots, automotive repair places, more than what we already have. So those were the Dirty 13. 24-hour operations we didn't want to have. We don't have those right now. The few that are there are in Aurora, such as a Murphy Oil that just opened up at Isleof and Parker Road. They're not open 24 hours. Why? Because it's not safe for their employees. There are other 24-hour conveniences that are open 24 hours that were there way before the Four Square Mile sub-area plan was planned, but they have bulletproof glass, they have the protection for their employees. The two items that we really are concerned with, obviously the 24-hour operation and the architectural design. I think you heard so much about the 24-hour operation, I'm going to allude to that in one moment, but the architectural design is probably a bigger issue. Because the bigger issue is that when the Lugano program was designed, we worked years to come up with a variety of plans that were not accepted, that finally, we got one that was accepted with articulation, with elevation, colors, that we did not want. We finally got something that we did want, after all those times that we did not get. Those plans, we expected, everybody in this room and those that preceded us at that meeting, expected any of the two pads to have the architectural renderings that we fought so hard. You heard about the cupola, about the elevation of the roof and everything like that. You heard it said once before, a square box did not fit in this area. That's what we have. You can dress it up, you could put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. The idea is that this does not fit here. Where does it fit? And you heard so many people, that would be the patrons to it. Less than a half a mile to the east, there is the Old Barn Store at the corner of Isleof and Parker. It has been for sale for years. It's now been taken off the market. That would be an ideal location. Why? It's in the corridor of Parker Road, it's in the corner of Isleof at the corner, there is no residential around there, the Piper Inn is right there. You have a much better visible location for that. So that would be, our recommendation is to have the owners, the Waffle House development, go back and look and try to negotiate that. And I think that the owner of that parcel might be conducive to have something such as that. One of the things that you heard Leslie speak of, and she spoke very nicely about the Google search. Google search is an interesting thing. You put in what you want and watch what it comes back. Well, if you put in, as she said, "Waffle House crime," you come up right away 17 pages of 10 items each, and then it was truncated, of issues that have come up in a Waffle House situation. Now, this is Waffle House. This is not the neighborhood, because we don't have a Waffle House. All we were able to do is come up with crimes in the area, so we don't know. But when you have the Waffle House come up, and just for comparison's sake, that was over 170 hits or stories on a 1,500 operation, unit operation, just for comparison. Burger King has 16,717 operations, 220 listed. McDonald's has 37,241 locations, and they only had 270 on the Google search. Arby's, which is right across the street from the new development that came in in Aurora, right there at Isleof and Parker, they have about 3,400 locations and 230 incidents on that. So you can see that it is something that does attract crime. What I wanted to do is, the first item that shows up in the Google search is this statement. "Why are so many crimes committed at Waffle Houses?" This was written April 24, 2018 by Dan Myers, who's the editor of the DailyMeal.com. Every week, it seems, we hear reports of crimes being committed at Waffle House. Why is that? There are a few factors at play here. One, there are many Waffle House locations in cities and neighborhoods that historically have high crime rates. Two, Waffle House is open 24 hours a day, and if anyone ever has been to an all-night diner at 3:00 a.m., you probably know that some unsavory characters can come out at night. Three, in many places, Waffle House is the only restaurant open around the clock, so it's bound to attract some misfits. It's also inexpensive and open to all. Quote, "We're a melting pot, we're a meeting place, and we're here to serve the public." Unquote, from Joe Rogers Jr., the Waffle House chairman, who told the New York Times It's also important to keep in mind that this is a problem that faces the entire 24-hour diner industry, not just Waffle Houses. It's not that more of these stories happen at Waffle Houses. It's just getting more attention when it happens at a Waffle House. Open around the clock, Waffle Houses provide a cross-section of America at the same time it is a place people can rely on and meet and hang out at any time of day. Criminalist and Police Sergeant Paul Grattan Jr. told us, "The Waffle House is not just a go-to for locals either, but it's also a notorious beacon for truckers and travelers of all kinds. A transient population with no investment in the area, combined with Waffle House's tendency to be something of a town square for many throughout the eastern half of the country, means higher likelihood of misdeeds." Waffle Houses are located next to major highways, which we really don't have right there, which makes getaways convenient, and they are open at odd hours, thus attracting people not necessarily tied to jobs. Leonard cites a former senior specialist for crime prevention for the Department of Justice added, "Their prices attract the young, and an age is correlated to crime. Younger people commit far more crime. The young are also disproportionately victims of crime." So as you see, this is not us. This is people that have done studies on that to show crime is going to come to us. The Sheriff's Office can't quote what's going to happen, but the fact that there is going to be more crime in there is very concerning to all the residents nearby. It might not happen, as we have done the research of the Waffle House on Mississippi in Aurora. The crime's not necessarily in the neighborhood of the parking lot, but it stretches out to all the residents behind that, the apartments. That's what we're concerned with. Lastly, the item that I do want to just bring on. You've heard so much about this letter from Michael Sheldon that we talked about. It's interesting to note that there are 14 items that he refers to that were the concessions that were given for Lugano. But I draw your attention to the backside and items 1 through 12. Why do we pick out the 24-hour operation and say that wasn't accepted, but yet all the other 11 items were? So to us, the attitude was, that was an agreement. Whether it was added to the Mylar or not, that was an agreement. The 24-hour operation is valid, and we believe that we would like to see that it continue to be valid, because we're not against restaurants. That was a restaurant pad. The other location that is just directly to the east of this is for a bank or some other type of operation. So we would like to see that develop, but the 24-hour operation was cherry-picked out of this. That's not fair to us. We're not the ones that were supposed to put it in the FDP. We're not the ones that put this in concrete, but yet every other item was done. So I contend, why are we pulling out the 24-hour and saying it's not valid? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to come from the public and make a statement? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Mr. Sheldon, would you like to respond?
Yes, just very briefly. First of all, I want to address Bruce Peterson. I'm glad you stayed through this whole proceeding, because Bruce Peterson has never been anything but a perfect gentleman through our entire discussions, and I want to tell him that in front of all of you, because it's true. And we have enjoyed a very good relationship. We know people in common. We've worked hard at this. But I'll agree also with the lady who came up and said, forget about the legalisms. We should focus on the intent of what the people, and I agree with her. What was the intent of our discussions? Very simple. So the presentation that Huntington Acres put together has attached the famous letter now, 10-year-old letter. It's dated December 8, 2008, written by my little law firm to the Huntington Estates, I'm sorry, Huntington Estates, not Huntington Acres, Huntington Estates Neighborhood Association. What does the ray say? The ray is concessions to neighborhood for Prospect Village FDP non-opposition. That's what the ray says. There is an agreement. We're saying there is an agreement. This was the agreement. The agreement was, we've already incorporated these 14 items when we brought the plans forward, hoping that the neighborhood group would finally support or not oppose this Prospect Village development. But they never did. And that's a clear issue, and probably explains why the final FDP doesn't have these conditions. But continue on. On the second page, there are 12 additional items, and there's some language we put just above it. It says, "The following addresses the remaining concerns from the original concession letter. It includes our current proposal in return for your agreement of non-opposition." One of those is the 24-hour operation. So what was I saying? What was my intent? What was I talking to Bruce about? What was I talking to the neighbors about? We can do these things. We've done a bunch of things just in good faith. We've built a double-sided masonry wall and a huge landscaping berm hundreds of feet wide. We did that anyway, because that was an appropriate thing to do. But if you can agree, because we knew it would limit the, it would limit the marketability of those restaurant pads, this, the other remaining issues, if you can agree to not oppose this development, we'll do these things, including the 24-hour prohibition. Now, there's no question that the PDP had a specific prohibition for 24-hour convenience stores, because that's what we were talking about for a year. These other issues came up because the neighbors wanted more. They wanted more concessions, and we said, we can do it, we can live.